Good evening. Welcoming everybody to the special Fairfax Town Council meeting, the Fairfax Women's Club, Wednesday, April 29, 2015. It's a little after 6:00 PM. And I'd like a roll call, please.
Councilmember Weinshof?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Here.
Councilmember Lacks?
Here.
Mayor Kohler?
Here.
All here.
Okay, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. It was Reed and Goddard. Okay, and all in favor? Okay, with that, we'll start the public hearing. And Jim, are you doing the staff report? Garrett, are you doing the staff report?
Yes, some introductory comments, and I'll turn it over to our planning director.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and make a staff report then. Sorry. Okay, so the item before you this evening actually is the introduction of ordinance that actually allows emergency housing shelters by right in specific zones. One of the zones is a newly created zone that we call public domain. Public domain really consists of town-owned properties, which is really the women's club, to Town Hall, includes pavilion, Bellinas Park, includes the parking lot on the field. That's in public domain, and the county library is in public domain. And so those are, in essence, the two areas, so to speak, that's public domain. Now, the other area homeless, well, emergency homeless shelters would be allowed is in the central commercial zone. Currently, the central commercial zone goes from Pastoree to around Bank Street, on Center, Broadway, and Sir Francis Drake, and then comes up Bellinas to Town Hall. So those are the two zones that emergency shelters would be allowed by right, meaning no use permit is required. Part of that is, under state law, we are required to designate a certain amount, a sufficient number of zones to allow emergency shelters by right. And so that's why we just couldn't designate the public domain zone. We had to expand it out to include the CC zone. Now, that being said, some of the reasons that we are doing this is, one, obviously it is state law that we're required to do this. Two, it is true that if we do this, HDD has indicated then that the town would then be allowed to qualify for the eight-year cycle, assuming we adopt the housing element by the end of May, instead of the four-year cycle. But more importantly, as I had a discussion with the mayor, we wanted to point out that staff, and we think in general, this is just good public policy, if Fairfax is socially conscious, which we believe it is. And as the town council, you may recall that back in November, no, November, October, you actually were the first community in Marin County to actually commit funding to create the permanent rest program, which is the rotating emergency shelter program. So you have that where you're, you have that, you took us, related to homelessness, to try to address that issue. The other thing is, if homelessness is a regional problem, which it is, and all the other cities in the county have already adopted or amended their ordinances to allow emergency shelters by right, it would then, to take a step further, that if Fairfax has always been a leader in social issues, then this is wholly consistent with that approach, to take the policy step to allow emergency shelters by right in the, in the two districts that we talked about. Now, before I turn it over to Jim, probably a couple of things. We did create development standards. We did have to have some objective development standards in the ordinance. Oh, set of standards, sorry, we call them just standards. The other thing is, Jim will go over some minor changes to the ordinance, and he has some copies to hand out. He'll see if you have any comments on the development standards. And the one thing I forgot to mention is that within the ordinance, it does limit the total number of beds to 20. So you could do by right 20. That could be any combination thereof, but anything over 20 will require a use permit. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jim to continue your presentation.
Sure, thank you. So in the staff report, on page two, first paragraph and last sentence, it refers to the general plan and two figures in the land use element, figure LU1, which is the general plan map, and figure LU2, the zoning map. Tonight, what's being amended is the zoning map. And I just wanted to point out that the general plan map, when we were going through this exercise, we realized it actually has a public domain on it. And we will be going back to amend the general plan map subsequent to tonight to redact the reference of schools, Deer Park School, as public domain, and bring it in sync with the zoning map that's attached tonight that referenced it as open space. We have no jurisdiction over it while it's still school property, but assuming it may transfer hands in the future, we'll clean that wrinkle out. There's also some inconsistencies we found in the general plan map, the LU1 reference with regards to the town center properties. It's shown green, part of it green and part of it purple. So we'll be doing that cleanup subsequent to tonight. But what's before you tonight, and what is getting amended, is the land, is the zoning map. Okay, and subsequent to, well, actually, there are three minor changes that we want to point out for your consideration tonight to the ordinance itself. The first one is a small wordsmithing change that's being recommended by the planning commission, and it's on page four, under 17 dot 130 dot 030. And that would be under B, where it says, this is under conditional uses and structures, it lists under B, the following, sorry, the following uses are permitted upon the securing of a use permit, and then it lists under B, private schools, daycare centers, or nurseries, and they just want to change that to comma churches and charitable institutions. There are two other minor changes, or one addition and one redaction, that was recommended by Mayor Kohler prior to tonight's meeting. And the first one is on the first page of the ordinance, under the, you originally, Mayor Kohler, recommended this go on the second whereas, but we thought it'd actually fit more under the fifth whereas. And that change would be, whereas the housing element of the general plan, and we would add a parentheses that says amended 10/22/13 and 9/17/2014. And I have copies to pass out to you with this change, with these two changes. And then the other change recommended by Mayor Kohler is on page three, under section seven, where it's referencing O. And the second line ends with "and one additional space for every 500 square feet of outdoor storage area." Mayor Kohler recommended that that language be redacted. We did a little research. We couldn't find any requirement in law to that effect. We did find out the legal reasoning behind having that language, which was, we had certain requirements in the standards of this ordinance, and we're supposed to be similar to the existing standards within the zones being proposed. And within the CC, there is a caveat along these lines. It says, "one additional parking space for every 200 square feet of outdoor storage space." So it's totally up to you guys if you want to redact that reference to "one additional space for every 500 square feet of outdoor storage space," or leave it in. And those would be the three minor tweaks, one recommended by the planning commission, the two recommended by Mayor Kohler. And then, as Garrett mentioned, I'm ready to take any questions, particularly with regards to section 17 dot 138 dot 010, the emergency homeless shelter standards. That's on page six. And actually, before that, on page five, I would just point out that there's two sections regarding height regulations and yards. There's no requirements for yards in the PD zone unless it's next to a residential zone, and then it's the same setback requirement that would be required in that zone, tangent zone. And then the height regulations repeat the Holy Grail, 28 and 1/2 feet or two stories. But with regards to standards, I'll just mention briefly, it talks about the numbers of beds, the off-street parking, entrance lobby, intake area, onsite management, conditional use permit for any additional beds over the 20, the length of stay, external lighting, onsite security, and then what happens if there's five verified complaints within 30 days, that they have to supply additional security. They have to meet all the town, county, state, and licensing requirements, and that would include a business license, unless they're charitable, a nonprofit organization, which is exempt under our building license fee. It also covers hours of operations, smoking ordinance design review, emergency homeless shelter fees, and emergency shelter fees. Under L, design review, I would just point out that we have a mandate existing in the general plan to create development standards and design guidelines. And so it's, while we don't have those in place beyond these standards listed here, we will be formulating, as described in the general plan, those development standards, design guidelines and development standards. So once those are in place, then it's no longer discretionary. When someone comes in, if someone were to come in for a shelter application, we would be reviewing that as a right based on those design criteria. It wouldn't be arbitrary, once we have those standards, the design guidelines in place, design guidelines. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. And I'd be glad to hand out a slightly amended version if you couldn't follow those three changes that I made, recommended. Yes? Okay.
So while Jim's handing that out, does someone have a question? Okay.
Sure.
John?
Okay. Yeah, I guess these are making their rounds. I guess, one, the first thing is, kind of, for clarification, once the
I'm sorry, can you pull your mic?
Oh, sorry. Once the, we are looking to, you know, as part of the general plan, I mean, this zoning map has the highway commercial in there, and the central commercial is two distinct places, and so once this, that changeover from highway commercial to central commercial is complete, would all this basically apply to the entire
Yes.
newly rezoned thing? Okay. And also, I noticed in the definitions, it says emergencies, emergency shelter, and then in other places, it's referred to emergency homeless shelter, and
There was a policy decision during the planning commission deliberations to try to, and also, I think, the joint committee with Affordable Housing, to try to refer to it as emergency homeless shelters. The definition that's listed in the ordinance is actually the state definition of emergency shelters, which, if you read the definition, it says is for homeless people. So, yes, there's a difference between the two versions, but there's a distinction without a difference.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I can, excuse me, I can think of a situation, for instance, if there's a major earthquake, you know, we've just had a major earthquake in another part of the world, pretty major deal, but in that instance, I mean, our pavilion, which, you know, falls into this zone, as a PD zone, is one of those designated emergency shelter for Fairfax residents who, at that point, presumably would be homeless because their house fell down. So, you know, it could be that that's another whole set of regulations and everything comes into place at that point, because basically, we are, you know, that's in an emergency situation, and that's our emergency shelter for residents of Fairfax, among other things, I imagine, but that's what the Red Cross has recognized as what they would
Actually, can I just ask for clarification on that? Because I was told that it isn't officially designated as our shelter, but as a, you know, sort of a dispatch area for where we would put people in an emergency. What's the
Let me just add something before we do this.
I'm just curious.
Because that's a different subject, and John's pointing out a good point, is that we have a definition in here, and then we go on to call it other things. What I would suggest that maybe we do on this section, that say, you know, within or this ordinance, also referred to as emergency homeless shelters, just so that we are clear. So the definition is as set forth in the code, and then we add a sentence to it that's saying, you know, here and after also referred to as emergency homeless shelters. That way, we've cleared up any potential concern.
Any discrepancy, take that one definition and
Do you actually see any language in the ordinance where it says emergency homeless shelters?
Yes. And I
I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Seven. Yeah. So, you know, in a quick 20 seconds, we've got four of them, but
So I guess, I guess, to me, in my mind, and different people can look at this differently, once you've laid out the definition, and then later on, you refer to it in the more full sense of the definition, it's a distinction without a difference.
Well, I think it's clear. So here's what I would suggest you do, is say
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
In this definition
Your call.
Just say here and after also referred to as emergency homeless shelters. And then we can ask, answer Renee's other question, but I think that is actually a different subject that maybe we could bring up in the disaster council, but
No, I agree. I just want to
I agree also, but
Because that was put out, I just want to get clarification.
No, I think it makes sense, but now we're just making it clear that when you see the term emergency homeless shelters, it goes back to this definition.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Jim? Does that work?
Sure. Yeah, and I also support Mayor Kohler's approach to that, because it does carry the definition over and solves that potential conundrum down the road. And then the other issue of, you know, what the Red Cross is doing with the pavilion, and how we're approaching it and all that, in my experience, it might be us doing the thing and not the Red Cross.
But that's something that's not pertinent to this.
That is true, but something that is
Okay.
Is under, on page six, under section D, onsite management. Let me see, basically, you know, it talks about the operator and, you know, different policies they take towards the clients. And at no point in this document does it refer, I mean, it refers to substance abuse and, you know, some of the issues that would come out of that problem. But in no place does it refer to mental health definitions. I mean, the mental health definitions are left to the operator of, you know, what kind of mental health needs are for the clients and things like that. And having recently interviewed a lot of people around homeless, things around Fairfax, mental health issues are, and a factor in, I'd say, the majority of the homeless people, and very often, there's a dual diagnosis of substance abuse and mental health issues, because there's often self-medication going on. And to not even mention it in this document, I think, is problematical, because in effect, it just leaves it up to the definition of the operator. I don't think that we need to start saying, oh, we want to have a mental health clinic in our community, because we have, you know, the psychiatric emergency services and Marin General to deal with that.
What would you want to do to change this language, to address it?
I think adding something, for example, in, you know, probably under paragraph D of Article I.
Can I chime in for a moment?
Yes.
Let's go back to the definition on page two for a moment. Emergency shelter means housing with minimal supportive services. Okay? And then let's go back to where you were talking about on page six, under D. It says, "Such policies shall include, but not be limited to prohibiting the use of possession or possession of controlled substance by residents. Rules concerning the use and possession of alcohol, curfew, prohibition of loitering, or any other provisions necessary to ensure the compatibility with surrounding uses."
Yeah.
So that, that leaves it wide open, and what I would caution you about is that emergency shelter is just that. It's not supportive, it's not transitional housing or supportive services. It's emergency shelter. And what you don't want to do is start to make it look like you're discriminating against people that are dual diagnosed, because that is a part of the homeless population. And what this ordinance is about is accommodating persons that are homeless, including people with mental challenges, and just about anybody on the street for a few days finds themselves in that state of mind.
Sure.
And the object is to help people not get to a worse state of mind and get off the street. So I think if you're starting to parse out mentally ill folks, you're going contrary to the spirit of what this law is prescribing.
Yeah.
I think before we go on, just one thing. I think Jim's pointing out minimal services, so it's not intended to be a homeless shelter as what's envisioned for the county with all these supportive services, but maybe we should hear your suggestion
Yeah.
And see how it falls out.
Yeah, definitely, because, I mean, my concern was that it leaves it completely up to the caretaker or the management
Well, actually, go to the, I'm sorry
Which, you know, there could be an argument for that, but this is the language that I was suggesting, that the clients were to be evaluated as to whether their, their mental condition exhibits a danger to themselves or others, or whether it interferes with the care and comfort of other residents. Clients in this category may be referred to county psychiatric emergency services or Marin General for evaluation. In other words, it's not requiring them to evaluate this, but if they're like, well, we can't handle this guy, and they might be a danger or to themselves or other people in the facility, and, you know, it just says, okay, this happens sometimes, and it should be referred to psychiatric emergency services, rather than set up a mental clinic here in Fairfax.
I have a suggestion, John, because I think that is requiring a level of ability with the person who is the onsite manager that doesn't exist. What I would suggest, if we're going to do something, say, something like, to, in any other provisions, necessarily sure compatibility with surrounding uses, and ensure the safety of onsite residents and adjacent residents. Because your language is putting a level of requirement on the shelter that I don't think fits for an emergency, but something, so we just are sure that somebody comes in there with significant mental challenges
Yeah, it's potluck.
They want to, you're just saying, safety of the people there, safety of the people around it. What were you going to say, Jim?
So let's go back to that number D on page six for a moment. Let me try this again. Onsite management. The operator of an emergency homeless shelter shall be qualified to operate the facility. An onsite staff person shall be designated as a neighborhood liaison to respond to and address any questions or concerns from surrounding residents regarding facility operations. Now, I emphasize this next sentence, quote, "good behavior," end quote, and, quote, "good neighbor," end quote, policies shall be submitted for review and approval of the planning director prior to commencement of facility operations, and shall be implemented and enforced at all times by onsite management. Such policies shall include," then it goes on. And then, "individuals who," at the end, "who not meet the screening criteria shall not be accepted into the facility."
And the screening criteria is determined by the shelter and the charter of that particular shelter? Or is there some kind of a, sort of, overall, I'm not sure what I'm trying to ask. It just seems to me that we're not, we can't step into what it is that the screening criteria are for a particular type of shelter. REST has their own screening criteria.
Well, what it says is that, at the outset, the planning director meets with them and decides what that parameters are.
I guess what Jim is saying is, there's a vision here that says, clients shall be screened for compatibility with shelter resources and compliance with applicable state and federal laws. I think what you would like is covered here. What we can do is maybe administratively come up more with your policies as opposed to incorporating into the ordinance, and that would give us more flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, it, because it calls out alcohol, curfews, and things like that, and loitering, you know, danger to self or others
It's, but it also
Would be a logical thing to put in that basket.
But, you know, again, it says so, "and any other provisions necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding areas." So I think it's, I think that's a blanket statement where it covers
It's pretty broad, you know.
Well, and that's what you want, in terms of anybody who's causing a problem.
Anything necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses, but, yeah, I just want to make sure that, yeah, we don't end up with a
I think I would just say that I feel that what Garrett just added is really important, and Jim just reiterated. So compatibility with shelter resources and for compliance with applicable state and federal laws. I think if we start calling out too much, even saying the danger to themselves or others means that we're potentially putting something on this where anybody that comes in mentally ill, they may say no to. And we don't want to do that, because many of these people are mentally ill, and it's different gradations.
Yeah.
So I think this kind of captures that, maybe, like Garrett suggests, is maybe something, if this truly is going to happen here, that we should, and we want it to, that we kind of develop the policy guidelines of what those good neighbor policies are, so that we're not, but, but we got to be careful, because the more we get into that, the more we're potentially telling them how to deal with it. And I think most people who run a shelter probably are schooled enough to know, not that they're going to necessarily have a degree, but schooled enough to know where somebody's coming in that's really threatening. So I think it's kind of covered, too.
And again, one more time, policies, good behavior and good neighbor policies shall be submitted for review and approval of the planning director prior to the commencement of facility operations, and should be implemented and enforced at all times by onsite management.
Okay.
I just want to engage in this conversation for one second, in that, John, it seems to me that you're wanting this added in a larger protection of the folks who may not be admitted due to screening guidelines. Am I right?
Yeah, to an extent, and, yeah.
Because we're looking at more protective things for the surrounding community versus what you're saying is that, that you would like there to be something, not restrictive, but just acknowledging that this population is there.
Yeah, acknowledging that this is, this is a major issue with many of the people. And I realize, I mean, you know, in this conversation, that there are pitfalls with recognizing that. But, you know, to be recognizing, you know, such factors as, you know, loitering or smoking and things like that, I mean, which is, I mean, we have a smoking ordinance that does that, too. To basically ignore the whole fact that there's mental health issues seems
Well, how about if you just say, after the loitering, you say After the loitering, you just say, "safety," "safety," without putting anything on it, "safety and any other provisions necessary," et cetera. So after the prohibition of loitering, "safety," "such policies shall include, but not be limited to," prohibition or use of controlled residence something, rules concerning blah blah blah, prohibition of, "safety issues."
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not with you. Where are you?
Okay, under six, so where you go, "prohibition of loitering," semicolon, "safety issues, and any other provisions necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses." So you're not putting mental health words in there, but you're
Yeah, I agree, you're calling it out, but it gives you something to
But all you're just saying is, "safety issues."
Yeah.
And I think, does that capture, because really, you want them to be looking at, and, and you're not putting, like, words that really refine it so much, or you're precluding somebody. What were you saying, David?
That's an H, onsite security. H addresses security.
I think Mayor Kohler's suggestion of putting security in this section D, paragraph D, rather, on bottom of page six, puts safety in the concern of, in, in the basket of things that the planning director would be evaluating, rather than what the operator would be responsible for. I mean, it's, it's good to have their responsible
So basically, all I'm saying is, you just add the word "safety issues."
Yeah, I'd support that.
And then, it's, it's global, it's not too detailed, and I think the onsite security And then, it's, it's global, it's not too detailed, and I think the onsite security is also a backstop, David.
Yeah. And that's, that's for the operator, and this is for the planning director. So, I would support that.
I, I have a, just a slight refinement on that language, maybe something, since these are good neighbor policies, they aren't strict guidelines, but these are things that the operator of this shelter would need to address in their operating plan, and so, in the spirit of that, I would suggest language perhaps, maintaining safety and security of surrounding properties, because really, that is a good neighbor issue, that whoever opens such a shelter has some kind of policy to consider, you know, safety and security of surrounding properties in terms of the population using the shelter, not spilling over and causing property. So, that would be just my suggestion, how to refine that particular language.
I'm sorry, maybe it's clarification. Are you talking about a good neighbor policy, such as maintaining? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, where Mayor Kohler had suggested, after the phrase, "prohibition of loitering."
Okay, so, safety issues, such as?
I, I would say.
Or a new?
Maintenance of safety and security of surrounding properties. After the word, "loitering" in subsection D.
Yeah. I, I think that, in regards to what your suggestion is here, basically, that narrows it to security of property around there and neighbors, which I do agree is a good thing. But, the definition of safety is, Mayor Kohler had it in there, also includes, you know, the whole danger to self or another, you know, which is what I was originally bringing up, but not wanting to go all the way there.
Yeah, I would suggest that safety issues is a good global thing, and then David points out onsite security, on H deals with clients and neighbors. So, I think that's where that additional refinement is captured, and I think your language, even though I think it's very good, is limiting it more, rather than just saying "safety issues" and leaving it broad, which is what all these other things are. It's very broad. Okay, so, I think we've got that, and that's a simple change.
I'm sorry.
Safety issues.
Right, that, but council member Lax's suggestion, we're not putting that anywhere.
I think he nodded his head, how you feel okay with that? Because the security is covered on H.
Yeah, it, it's fine, it's a wordsmithing choice. Safety issues is a little vaguer, but it is more encompassing, so, I'm fine with that, too. I was just gonna suggest that.
Other questions here, comments?
I, I have other questions, too, unless you're not done.
No, I'm, I'm done, pretty much, here.
Okay, Peter?
Thank you. So, in looking at this, I had a question regarding the specific amendments to the table entries in the town code, and the effect of this on page two. I just wanna make sure what parcels were changing here, and, just to make sure that this is tracking correctly. On page two, it says, "the table entries are previously read, book one, page two, page ten, block two," and then there's some changes, and if you could just explain what parcels are being changed here, just so I can track that.
Yeah, if I might add, I mean, this is something I didn't have on my master thing, but, yeah, it refers to the page and block on the, on the map that you've got there, but if the APN number was called out, it would be, I mean, I'd try to check and see.
Well, we've.
And there's no way to.
We've gone through this, line by line, parcel by parcel, parcel map by parcel map. And so, in essence, what we did is, in the existing code, which really is oddity, but that's our code, it lists out parcel by parcel in specific zones. And when we created the PD zone, it's town-owned properties, which consist of a bunch of parcels, even though it seems like it's one big parcel, and the library. And so, what we did is, to extend, any of those parcels were listed in another zone, we took it out. In general, most of the parcels were never listed, because it falls in the general category in the definition that I think is RS six, or something like that, and just list everything. It just lists the subdivisions. It actually does not even identify town-owned parcels. So, we went back, and that's how we created this list. And so, I know without pulling the parcels, and we have the maps, we, we've gone through and made sure that only the parcels that are listed under PD are town-owned or the library. And so, that's, that's what we did.
I just wanna add that I looked at every parcel in the code, and went over these with Jim and Garrett Monday morning, to make sure that there, they were the right parcels. And then, on page three, where it goes to the book two, some of those were actually not listed in the current code, and the reason being, we sat down with Linda Neal, our planner, and that other parts, and Garrett was just explaining this, these parcels weren't named in the code prior, in their town-owned properties, but they were captured under these broad categories that didn't list the parcel numbers. So, I guess to the extent that you believe that I looked at the detail, and I went over them, and we went over the maps on Monday, the big maps, so, they are the right parcel numbers, and I spent a lot of time on this with the two of them.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, there should be no errors. That was one of the things, I was trying to make sure, because we had some glitches before.
And, and we actually checked two, if not three, times. We've gone over this plenty of times.
And, and just to be, from my understanding, the parcels that are listed here that are being changed are the town-owned parcels that are.
What's being added are town-owned parcels and the library parcel.
Okay. And I'm curious, what was the zoning, was there any zoning of the town-owned parcel, parcels prior to this?
Yes, RS six, and I believe the two that you referenced, RS, RD five dot five to seven. I can't off the top of my head.
I think most of the town properties were previously zoned residential.
Okay, and I'm curious about the number of homeless beds that are allowed as a matter of right, and where we came up with the number twenty, just trying to understand the rationale for that number.
That's our homeless count as of the 2010 census.
Okay, and, was curious about, under section seventeen point one three zero zero three zero.
Page, I'm sorry.
On page four. This is describing the town parcels, right, the, the public domain parcels? And, to me, in terms of allowing the opportunity to create emergency homeless shelters on town property, it does make sense in subsection B to allow daycare centers or nurseries as a, as a use. I'm not so sure about private schools, though, as to why we would be allowing, you know, potentially private schools on, on our public property, town-owned property. And then likewise, the addition of churches and charitable institutions, I, I think that should be stricken as well, because it doesn't, I, I don't see why would we be, we would be allowing uses for a church or a private school on town property.
So, just to back up a second, it, these are, these are what's allowed with a conditional use. It's discretionary on the town's part. It does not have to be allowed. It's not by right.
Well, the following uses are permitted.
Securing a use permit.
Okay, use permit.
Yeah, the O two O is the, can, by right.
I'm sorry?
Above it are what's allowed, permitted.
Okay, and, and so, I would have some, some issue with private schools or churches or charitable institutions, including that into the zoning.
Of course, those, again, those would require a use permit, so it's discretionary on the town's part.
Yeah, but I, I don't think that that's appropriate to allow churches, you know, on state, on, on city property. And then, for the principal permitted use in the section above that, I'm not sure why hospitals is there. That doesn't seem to make sense for our town, and it seems like what's left out is the fire department. And so, I would suggest changing that as well, limiting hospitals, adding fire station. And again, my concerns with section seventeen point one three zero point zero three zero.
One question, Peter. So, fire fits under governmental buildings under A. That's a governmental building, so that's why that's not called out.
And, but I, you know, I don't know why we would be adding hospitals. That doesn't seem appropriate for the town.
There are some, well.
But again, I mean, these would be requiring a conditional use permit. Not the hospital.
The hospital is.
Section O two zeros.
Now, now, remember, anything on town property would require the council, as a property owners, to prove anything, that would assume that you're selling or leasing part of the property. So, you definitely have that. But, at this point, I think it's really up to council. If you want us to take some things out, that's fine. It's not required to be in there.
Let me just ask, one suggestion of, of the hospital maybe coming out of the principal permitted uses, I doubt, I'm doubtful that a hospital would come to Fairfax, but to the extent that it would, and we're limited as far as our medical facilities, and especially some of us are getting to be seniors, and, you know, Marin General's far, Kaiser's far, at a minimum, I think we would want to have them potentially under continued, conditional use. And then, as far as the other ones, I don't feel real strongly about it, but I kinda think mirroring the kind of uses that we're saying we like in the PD, public schools and preschools. If a private school came here, such as, you know, a new version of St. Rita's in a different place, let's say something like that, and somehow it worked that we weren't, we were gonna move out of town hall, and they wanted to move that school there, wouldn't we think that, you know, given the Ross Valley School District and limitation on space, that we would wanna at least consider it under a conditional use permit, rather than just excluding it? Because we, schools are something that benefit the community. So, I guess what I'm suggesting is, I mean, I also don't have a big problem with leaving any of that in under B, but, you know, I would defer to the council, but if we wanted to take hospitals out above, I would definitely wanna put in conditional use, permit land, just because someday, you know, that may really be something that could be considered, and it's gonna be really valuable for our community people in Fairfax, in West Marin, it's so far to the hospital. So, I would just say, I wouldn't, I wouldn't just completely take it out. So, I would wanna hear what the rest of the council has to say. I've been speaking a little too much. David?
Yeah, I would just, I don't know. I mean, one can look at the word churches, a rather generic phrase, you may wanna change it to religious institutions. On the other hand, I don't really know why a public body would be giving its land to religious purposes. They can certainly acquire private property on their own. As far as the charitable institution thing goes, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, although, I do have, I think I share Peter's concern a little bit about the private schools, again, they can go out and they can acquire private property. I don't think public, public assets should be used for private or religious enterprises. And I really have no idea why a nursery is on there at all. We're singling out one particular operation as among many that are quite worthy. So, I guess I would limit it down to, none. I would just take up the whole cockamamie sentence, and just, maybe you wanna move the hospital in there instead, but I, I just don't think that we should be dispensing with our assets to this subset of operations as worthy as they all are.
So, I think you're saying, let's have hospitals take the rest of this out. Renee, did you wanna weigh in?
No, I'm fine. I'm in agreement with what, what Peter and David have said, in terms of those particular institutions.
And, John, I mean, I, I think it would be fine if we took that whole B out, and instead just put hospitals there, but, John?
Whole P out and put?
Hospitals instead, under the conditional use.
Oh, down, down below, and instead of where the private schools and nurseries and all that is.
Right. The only thing I would say for daycare centers, I'd like to vote to keep those in. You know, to the extent that there could be a little daycare center there for, that would be very inexpensive, I would.
Well, there's, yeah, I mean, there's a history of that. I mean, there's after-school stopby's and things like that, right down the street here in our community center.
So, what were you gonna say, John?
I agree that hospitals maybe should move down there. I mean, it, it kind of opens the door. I mean, maybe that's, you know, I mean, I know psychiatric emergency services is something that's currently located right next door to Marin General, which, with the expansion of Marin General, that physical space is being, I mean, they're doing huge construction right next to it, and that's being threatened.
Okay, so, you would, you would vote for hospitals there? How about taking out the rest of it, and potentially leaving daycare centers or anything else?
Yeah, I mean, it's, what, you're saying, taking everything out of there?
What has been discussed here is, is taking everything out, and I'm just putting a vote in for daycare centers.
So, principal permitted uses and structures in the PD would just have daycare centers in?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm talking about, we're taking hospitals out of the principal permitted uses, everything else stays.
Everything else stays, okay.
Under conditional uses and structures, we leave A in, and we change B to take everything out, except potentially hospitals and potentially daycare centers.
I'm gonna agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll go for that. I mean, I don't know exactly what charitable institution would include.
But they can find their own place.
Yeah, they can, yeah.
I would support that, too, you know. Daycare center, I think, is a good use.
So, we just have hospitals and daycare centers in B, and we take hospitals out of principal permitted uses. Does that work? Sounds like it does. Okay, other things, Peter, that you had?
Uh, thank you. Check my other comments. Thank you.
I think we've heard from John, from David, from Renee, and Peter, and even myself, and I also like the changes that were made in the amended version, and nobody's spoken against those, so with that.
We should go to public comment.
We should. Thank you. Let's, any members of the public like to comment on this item? Or just taking a break? Or just taking a break? It's fine, we're happy to have you. Thank you. So, thank you, and enjoy your time with us. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And I'd like to entertain a motion. Who would like to do that? Renee, would you like to? You appeared to be turning to that.
I would love to do that. So, let me find the, where am I reading? This piece?
Yeah, on number two.
I'm looking at the wrong page.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion to introduce and waive the first reading and read by title only of ordinance number 788, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending town code Title 17, zoning chapters 17.008, definitions, 17.012, zone districts established, 17.052, off-street parking and loading requirements, and 17.100, CC central commercial zoning district, and adding new chapters 17.130, P D public domain zoning district, and 17.138, regulations applying in multiple zoning districts and amending the town zoning map.
And if you just add, "as amended, as discussed by the council."
As amended and as discussed by the council.
Would anyone like to second?
I'll second that with the amendments as discussed by the council.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.